I'd like to call the March 4th, 2025 City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday.
Here.
Mungard.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glove.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Cluke.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The five of the United States of America. And we are a republic of which is theirs. One nation under God, individual. With the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
Current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a couple of items tonight that have some public hearings. I know a lot of people are here with interest, and we also have the weather. So we will have on the public hearing, and proponents and opponents will put a three-minute time limit. That way, everybody can have time to get through. And then if you've sent an email in, we do have those as part of the official record, and all emails have been given to council members as well. So those are already on the record whether you come up and speak or not. With that, the consent agenda. Councilman Cluke, understand, do you want to pull an item?
Yes, I do. I would like to pull item number one, which is setting of the agenda. So immediately, I'd just like to discuss it. I'd like to move to amend the agenda, to change our order to be D, F, and then E, G, H, so that we can handle all business first, to allow as much time as possible for public comment, and then to ensure an end time of not later than 8:00 PM for everyone's safety here, as was requested. The intent is to then ask that all public comments that we may hopefully get to and start tonight be held open until the meeting on March 18th, where we would resume them. And any unheard agenda items from tonight's agenda should be handled first on the 18th as a reconvened meeting, and then we would progress to the published agenda for the 18th.
Okay. So I heard two motions in there then. The one will be the reorder of the agenda. And item F, which is third reading and resolutions, will be moved before E, which is the second reading item. So that'll be the first motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we have a motion. Is there a second on that?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, do you know since it's been pulled off, so then do you call it up to the floor? A motion to...
Say that again.
So call it up to the floor, sorry. Call it up to the floor, then a motion to approve. Because it's just been pulled off.
Oh.
And then...
Motion to amend. So you're correct. So we need the motion actually to approve the agenda, then we'll do the motion to amend. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Now we have a motion to amend, so I'll just restate it again for the record. So the motion to amend is to take third reading and move it before second reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Please vote. Council discussion. Any discussion on that? I'm sorry. Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
Okay. And then if I heard correctly, your second motion is to convene the meeting no later than 8:00? Trying to speed through because of the weather. Good thing we've got an attorney here with Roberts Rule. So we have a motion as amended. I'm usually good at this, too. We have a motion as amended, so now we need to vote on the motion as amended. And this is on the agenda. Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
So the motion is amended, and that passes. So now your second motion was to end the meeting no later than 8:00 because of weather. If we hit the 8:00 time limit, all the items will be carried over to the next regular meeting, and if we have a public hearing that's open, that hearing will stay open, and that'll carry over. Okay. Is there a second on that? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Sunday.
When you said if it's open, it was my understanding that...
Folks, if they choose to go home early, would still have an opportunity, no matter what, to come back at the next meeting and state their opinion.
I think my only clarification is if before 8:00, we actually hold an entire public hearing, and then we close the public hearing, that one wouldn't be carried over. It'd be the future agenda items, or any business that was not completed tonight is what would carry over.
Okay. I was understanding that you told me when we spoke about this earlier that you wanted to encourage folks that want to leave early that they could come back the next time.
Yes. That is my intent, Dave.
We can do that. Okay.
If they have not spoken tonight, we will hold all of them open in case they want to leave now for weather considerations.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Steve.
Everybody, council clear on the motion? Okay. Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
So that passes. So we are on item... Yeah, item D stayed the same. So we're on item D1, ordinance 2050. You guys are really challenging me tonight. So we do have the rest of the consent agenda. Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents on the consent agenda? Council discussion? Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
I'll get back in my groove now. No, thank you. Item D1, ordinance 2050, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from CBD Central Business District, GC General Commercial, and GI General Industrial, to CBD Central Business District for property legally described as lots 3 through 8, Block 15 Papillion with vacated Second Street right-of-way, together with parts of tax lot 2A, 2B2, 2B2A, and 2A6, Section 27 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. The applicant is the city of Papillion Old Public Works. Is there a councilman who will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Cluke. Item D2, ordinance 2051, an ordinance to approve the vacation of alley right-of-way within Block 15 Papillion as platted, surveyed, and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, with title thereto retained by the city of Papillion. Councilman will introduce. Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item... Okay, now we're going to jump to item F. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Item F1, ordinance 2032, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R4 multifamily residential to CC community commercial for the property legally described as part of tax lot F, tax lot G, and part of tax lot H of Section 36 Township 14 North, range 11 East of the 6PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of Highway 50 and Highway 370. The applicant's Stan Harrell with Metro Community College. It's MCC Sarpy. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2032? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion? Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
Related item. Motion passes. Related item, F2, Resolution R250049, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of tax lot F, tax lot G, and part of tax lot H of Section 36 Township 14 North, range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of Highway 50 and Highway 370. Applicant's Stan Harrell with Metro Community College. So motion to approve Resolution R250049? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? I will note that the applicant's here. Okay. Any council discussion? Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but I figured with the weather, I'm going to go by you unless you stand up. F3, Resolution R250050, a resolution to approve the Metro Community College subdivision agreement. So motion to approve Resolution R250050. Motion by Councilman Cluke. Second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents or opponents? Again, I'll note the applicant's here. Any council discussion? Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
Item F4, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1, Article 3 of the Papillion Municipal Code to create a criminal violation for failure to appear. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2047?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Sunday. Councilman Sunday, I understand you have a motion to amend. Is that correct? You want to offer that?
Sure. Let me give it a little background first. The reason for this motion, as I understand it, is that when we prosecute a city ordinance violation, our attorney or attorneys, when someone doesn't appear, they don't have any ordinance on the books that enables them to charge the defendant with their failure to appear on the citation. The county attorney's office could charge that, but they're really not eager to because it's not their case. So we really need our own ordinance for failing to appear on alleged violation at court. I'm offering amendment because there's another way somebody can fail to appear. For instance, they show up for their first hearing, they plead not guilty, the judge sets a trial date, and then releases them on a bond or on a personal recognizance bond or a PR bond, and then they don't show up for that down the road. So my amendment would be to add the language, and I'll read it. "It shall be unlawful for any person who's been charged with a violation of any ordinance and who is released from custody under bail or recognizance or conditioned release to willfully fail to appear before the court granting such release when legally required, or to surrender himself within seven days thereafter."
So we have a motion to amend. I'm not going to reread it, but is there a second on that? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Is there any council discussion on the motion to amend? Any other comments? Mr. Gaines.
I just wanted to ask Nicole if arguments for...
This amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any other council discussion?
I just add that this helps us mirror what the state statute provides, and it just codifies it for our ordinances.
Thank you very much for catching that.
Yep.
Please vote. This is on the voting on the motion to amend.
A, N, zero, N, S.
So now the motion is amended. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
Motion passes. F5, a resolution to approve a motion to reconsider for Resolution R250026, a resolution to approve the final plat for Granite Falls North, replat 1, requested by Councilmember Stube. So I'm assuming a motion to approve Resolution R250051 by Councilman Stube, second by Councilwoman Cluke. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion on the motion to reconsider. Mr. Sunday. Okay. Please vote on the motion to reconsider.
Seven yes, one nay by Gaines.
Motion passes. So item F6, which is the item being reconsidered, Resolution R250026, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replating of lots 180 to 289 and outlots L through P and S, Granite Falls North, generally located on the southeast corner of South 114th Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant's Richland Homes LLC, Granite Falls North, replat 1. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250026? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Patrick Sullivan, 1413 South Washington Street, Suite 300 here in Papillion. I have with me Jerry Torzahn, who is the principal for the applicant in this matter, and can answer any questions that I may fail or are unable to announce. Initially, I just want to thank you for rehearing this matter. I think we probably should have been a little more prepared at the previous hearing. I just want to give you a few backgrounds on this. This is the last of four phases, so this, in a sense, these five-yard setback-type properties are being sprinkled in with more typical developments. It's not necessarily affordable housing that we're putting in, but it's more moderately priced house from what mostly the other product is out there, or what would normally be on a 10-foot side setback. The houses are basically going to be narrower but deeper into the lot. There's about a $75,000 difference between the housing, and that may not seem like a lot, but when you're talking about 20% down and people are starting or trying to get into the market, that extra $15,000 they have to come up with with a down payment is a struggle. It fits another area or another market that really isn't being touched here. There's... And I do want to emphasize, we worked pretty heavily with the planning department to come up with a project that would look appealable. There are six different types of plans on here, and of those six different plans, there's three different faces or facades to the houses. So we're really talking about 18 different type of houses. No two houses that are alike are going to be located next to each other. Each of them have different types of frontage or facing, so it isn't, for lack of a better term, going to be looking like barrack housing at all. And it's more going to create like a streetscape through the property, and it just allows entry into the housing market at a different level than what some of the other houses that we're seeing out there. As far as trying to do what we per se affordable housing, we're not saying it's that. I still don't know really what the solution is to that, and I don't know if it's through government aid or support to do that, but it is bringing the housing market of what I would say almost the starting market, not starter homes, in Papillion about $75,000 less. And I'll try to answer any question, and Mr. Torzahn's here as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines.
Just had a quick question, make sure I heard. So by reducing the lots in this project, you're saying it's going to save $75,000 off of each of those homes?
It's going to be a $75,000 less expensive home, $50,000 to $75,000 less home than houses that we're typically going to put on a 10-foot side setback yard.
Okay. Yeah, I think the last meeting, I think we were, that we addressed this, I think they said they were going to save $10,000 or something like that. My recollection might be wrong, but... So I appreciate clarification.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Gaines.
So I asked, I'd like to carry over my comments from the last meeting that we addressed this, but I reached out to staff. I'm not sure if I got my answer. Has city council voted on an application or anything that the developer for this project? Have we voted approving these five-foot yards prior to the last meeting that we addressed it?
On this specific project or in general?
In this specific project.
Look to Mr. Gibbons.
So for this particular project, it's been, there was a preliminary plat back in 2018, and then they came through with two final plats afterwards, and then they acquired additional land. That necessitated a revised preliminary plat in 2020. It was roughly 2019, 2020 it was approved. And so at that time, they requested the same R2 zoning district that the original subdivision was approved. When this project came in for this final phase four, for this final phase, they requested the lot configuration change, and then this is when they asked for the PUD agreement, so the PUD amendment. This is the chance for them to ask for that setback reduction.
So this action would be the first one?
So this is basically what we voted on four weeks ago, I believe, or five weeks, whatever it was. That's the first time that this has ever come before council. We haven't taken any action to indicate that we were going to approve this, and they continue to move forward. That's the first time we've seen the five-foot yard, side yards at that meeting. Is that correct?
For this particular project. So again, the revised preliminary plat was approved three years ago.
Right.
So at that time, we've not seen, there's been no action by council except for this final plat for this phase.
Which is the first time we've seen five-foot yards?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. So part of the reason why I brought this back on is because of the fact that it wasn't here at the night that this was brought up. But the other thing is, is that I look at this as providing an option to people that want to be within the Papillion community. And so, you know, there's limited things that government can do from the standpoint of making housing affordable, not necessarily affordable housing, but housing affordable. And so there's things such as regulations, there's things such as permits, there's obviously the levy that, you know, we assess to properties. And I think by us being able to provide an option to developers, which ultimately gives an option to individuals that want to stay in the Papillion community but want maybe to have less maintenance associated with a particular house that they might want to purchase, I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I would just repeat my comments from the last meeting real briefly. We're talking about houses that are over $400,000. We're not helping that first-time home buyer or that lower-income person who we say we want to help. I don't see any reason that Papillion should abandon its 10-foot side setback, which helps keep our community beautiful and livable, and to allow these five-foot side setbacks that look atrocious, in my opinion. They look cheap, people are crowded in. It's not the kind of community that we want. And what are we getting for this? We're saving maybe $50,000 to $70,000, but the homes are over $400,000. We're not helping poor folks here. That's not what we're doing. We're just sacrificing the aesthetics of our community, and I haven't heard a good reason for it, so I'm voting no.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six yes, two nays by Sunday and Gaines.
Motion passes. Item F7, related item, Resolution R250027, a resolution to approve the Eighth Amendment to the Granite Falls North subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250027? Motion by Councilman Cluke. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Sunday. Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
Motion passes. Also related, F8, Resolution R250028, a resolution to approve the Granite Falls North replat 1 planned unit development agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250028? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A, N, zero, N, S.
Motion passes. We are now back to items for second reading, which are public hearings, so will be on item E1. Ms. Brown, if you'd just let me know when you're ready. Okay. Item E1, ordinance 2035, an ordinance to amend Article 4 zoning district regulations of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the frontage required for lots. The applicant's the city of Papillion. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, ordinance 2048, an ordinance to amend Chapter 85 Animals, to amend 85-1 definitions of Article 1 definitions, 85-6 prohibited keeping of animals of Article 2 general provisions, and 85-14B of Article 3 dogs and cats, and to renumber Article 7 enforcement violations and penalties as Article 8 enforcement violations and penalties to create Article 7 chickens, all to adopt regulations for the keeping and licensing of chickens, submitted by Councilman Gaines. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Before we start, knowing we, there is the potential, we're going to carry this over to the next meeting if we run out of time, I would ask if there's anybody that wants to speak but cannot be here next week, next meeting, let's let them go first, and then we'll follow up with individuals that want to speak if we have time, and then if we miss them, then they've had the opportunity to come back next. So first, I'm going to call for proponents, anybody in favor of this ordinance. And when you come up, if you'd state your name and address for the record, and again, we'll have three minutes. I'll give a two-minute warning, and then at time, just wrap up final thought. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Steve Zivney, 838 Gale Street. Stood before you approximately 12 years ago, pursuing this same interest of mine. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Gaines for his leadership and for him championing this important, feels it's important to those citizens. Also, I don't think I ever thanked Councilman Mungard for his past support and leadership in the last time that we tried this. I think this time around, the ordinance is very well-written. I commend Councilman Gaines for that. I think there was a lot of anxiety and a lot of concern by council members and other citizens about the possibility of owning backyard chickens in Papillion. Some of the things I think you've done to strengthen the ordinance, I think are very important. What I'll call a Chicken 101 class is a part of the ordinance now. So anyone that wants chickens are going to have to go through a class. They're going to have to have a certification, so they're going to know what it's all about. And, you know, I was raised around chickens. I was on an acreage. I was in 4H, and it's a lot of work. I'm not going to, I'll be the first one to stand up and say it's going to be a lot of work, and it might not be for everyone. I also think that the neighbor, notifying the neighbors is also another very important component of this, and there was a lot of pushback 12 years ago for that. So this gives that opportunity for those neighbors to object or to not give consent for those folks that want chickens, that they have concerns about the smell or predators. They can just simply give their, not give their consent. But again, you know, 12 years later, I see five familiar faces. We still have the same mayor, so I'm really thinking that this ordinance has been really, really thought about. And I just feel that those of us that take the time, the energy, the money, are educated about it, and really care about it, and know what it's all about, have those neighbors that don't care, have the class and have been educated about it, ought to be able to have chickens. Very simple. I don't, I can't object to my neighbor that has three 75-pound dogs. So again, I also want to just speak to my friends here, other chicken proponents, that when I was here before, everyone that came was a proponent that night. Not one person spoke against it, but it still didn't pass. So I don't want you to think that this is going to be cakewalk, or this is going to be in the bag. I encourage you to contact and message and reach out to anyone that you think might be a proponent for this, and flood their email boxes with people that want to see this go through, because I did hear that no one objected, but we had overwhelming emails last time of those that objected to it. And I'd also like to just ask one thing, too, of the council members, too. When it comes down to that vote, if you're going to vote either way, I don't care which way you vote, but if you would just give the reason of why you're going to vote that way, I think we're owed that. My kids sat here that night, and the only two people that said something were the ones that were for it, and the other six didn't. So I just think that is owed to us as just common courtesy. But again, I appreciate the time that you guys put into this. I appreciate you giving it the time, or again, putting it in front of the council. And with that, I...
Thank you very much. Next proponent. Welcome. Can you pull the microphone down just a little bit? Thank you.
My name is Cora Xalas, and I live at 10730 Laramie Street in Papillion, Nebraska. And I love chickens, but unfortunately, we are not permitted to have them in our yards, which has kept them out of my life for too long. Chickens are amazing for your lawn, as amazing in the kitchen. Raising chickens could save you money on eggs. Just think, going into your backyard and getting some fresh eggs for breakfast. It can teach kids responsibility in how to take care of animals and agriculture. Kids like me would love chickens.
What grade are you in?
I'm in seventh grade.
Great job. Thank you. Next. Proponent.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Rexalas, and I'm a very proud dad tonight. I live at 10730 Laramie Street in Papillion. I'm a lifelong resident, and as many of you know, a veterinarian. So I'm here to support Councilman Gaines' proposal to allow chickens within the city as it's written. I think it was a well-written ordinance. I really want to say that I agree with the educational piece that's included in there. As a veterinarian, I spend most of my day educating pet owners about the proper care and nutrition and housing of their animals, and how that can avoid a lot of problems. So I think that's a really key piece here. I've submitted some comments to our city clerk that I hope that you... key piece here. I've submitted some comments to our city clerk that I hope that you guys have just to address, I think, what the primary concerns are in terms of whether this may cause a nuisance in the city and whether it could adversely affect the public health. So I encourage you to read those. I know we don't have a lot of time tonight, so. But the primary one I want to point out is that I think that what came up last time, and I think what's come up in some comments this time, is whether or not they may cause a nuisance within the city. There are obviously communities in our area that allow chickens, that have ordinances on the books that do allow that. Mass Canadian Society serves as our animal control authority in much of the metropolitan area and does serve those communities that do have backyard chickens. In Bellevue, for example, they responded to 1,606 calls for service last year, of which only one involved chickens. And Omaha, they had 17,266 calls for service, of which only 72 involved chickens. If we apply that to Omaha, sorry, to Papillion's rate of calls, we would probably expect less than one per year, which is a pretty low rate. So something just definitely to consider. Obviously, you know, as a veterinarian, public health, it is a concern, and chickens certainly can spread zoonotic diseases. Those are diseases which may spread from a human to, sorry, to an animal to a human. Primarily, we'd be concerned about Salmonella, Campylophactor, and obviously avian influenza. All of those do require direct sustained contact with sick and infected animals. These are not things that are spread generally by air. Having chickens present in your community does not increase your risk, you know, if they are in your next-door neighbor's property. I think obviously, you know, appropriate health, appropriate sanitation, education, and care are the key to preventing any problems with those things. Just to note that to date, the CDC has reported 70 cases of avian influenza in the country. All of those have come from contact with sick and infected animals. Principally, actually, most of those have actually been-
One minute.
-from dairy cattle. Thank you. So I think, you know, in short, I think it's a great ordinance, I think it's well-written, and I think there is support in the community for it and properly enacted. I don't see it as a large concern for the community. Thank you.
You did mention your letter, and all the council do have that, and that's part of the record as well.
Yeah, the data is in there. And if anybody obviously has any questions about public health, animal care, you know, I'm certainly available. There is a lot of data out there in terms of outbreak and education.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines?
I just have a couple of questions for you. And not only did you're a resident in Papillion, but you also work in Papillion, correct?
Yes, yes, I own Papillion Animal Hospital.
And I want to talk about safety. It's been one of my big things, public safety, police, fire, and, you know, things like this also. But it was my intent to create this ordinance with the training part of it to make it safer, number one. But you had mentioned proper sanitation, so on and so forth. Those things will be covered in a training class, the ones that I, people I contacted. But simply going out, tending to your backyard chickens, coming in and washing your hands generally prevent transfer of any infections?
Oh, yeah, 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 for sure. So, you know, obviously with Salmonella and Campylophactor, those bacteria are simply prevented by hand washing, just basic hand washing techniques.
Basically, the same thing as cooking. You handle raw meat, you wash your hands, so. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because the last time we addressed it, that was safety with some people's concerns and, you know-
Yeah, if, and to speak to safety too, there has been some comment in the community, specifically about avian influenza, and introducing chickens would increase the amount of avian influenza in the community, and that is not the case. And I think the misconception is that chickens are spreading avian influenza. The reservoir species are migratory waterfowl. Chickens are just uniquely sensitive to that particular strain of influenza and show a high mortality rate. So in Nebraska, there have been, I believe, 29 flock outbreaks since 2022. All of those have been genomically isolated and tested to determine the origin of the infection, and all of those origins have been wildlife exposures or biosecurity failures. So these are not chickens spreading to other farms, other properties. You know, a backyard chicken flock in Papillion is not a risk to a commercial flock in Cass County, for example, or Southern Sarpy County.
Thank you. Next proponent. And I won't ask you your, what grade or age you're in.
Mike Elkins, 1212 Buckboard Boulevard in Papillion. I am definitely a proponent. I know I've talked to multiple people that have, you know, some current concerns with, you know, noise, smell, things like that. The last gentleman kind of stole a lot of my thunder with a lot of those things. But I actually did reach out to Bellevue city council members, talked to several of them, along with code enforcement, and then also with their planning department. The city council members, a lot of them had the same kind of fears originally. They started having, allowing backyard chickens in 2011, so well over a decade they've been doing this. They have not had any issues with the actual keeping of chickens, very, very few complaints in that regard. Most of their, I guess, complaints or enforcement come in the form of people just not getting the proper license or the tags or the permits to keep those chickens, or they order a chicken coop off of Amazon and it's too small for the flock that they're going to have. So the actual keeping on the property is not an issue that Bellevue's experienced, at least according to those folks. I would be happy to share those folks' name and contact information. They gave me permission to do that, so if you would like that information, I can certainly give that to you on an individual basis, and you can reach out to them directly if you would like. The, according to the World Health Organization, worldwide, there's been less than 1,000 cases of bird flu transferred to humans. Out of 8 billion people, less than 1,000. Well, a huge majority of that is actually not in the United States, it's actually overseas in Asia and China. There's been about 70 cases here in the United States, so again, 70 cases out of 350 million people. Like the last gentleman said, this is not a widespread people passing on, or chickens passing on, bird flu, so I know that is definitely a concern. According to some, the planning committee or planning department in Bellevue, they have anywhere from about 20, on average, 20 to 30 permit requests per year, so it's not a huge number of people requesting that. One thing that they did say is typically when people decide to go through the permit and actually have the backyard chickens, it's either one or the other. They either do it correctly, and they get the proper permits, they get the proper housing and coop set up, and they take care of them well, or the people that don't really want to go through all of that paperwork and the keeping and taking care of those, they don't. So there's really no middle ground, meaning that you've got people grabbing chickens and not taking care of them. Either they do it well, or they don't do it at all.
One minute.
Thank you. The other, you know, just being a self-sufficient person, you can save some money when you have backyard chickens with the eggs, especially nowadays with the prices of eggs going up. There obviously still is a cost with, you know, proper care, veterinary stuff, if you have, you know, buying food and things like that. But one good thing about backyard chickens is they eat just about anything. So if you have table scraps, you know, you're cutting up the veggies, anything like that, any scraps, you can throw them out to the chickens, and that also allows you to have fertilization. You can clean that up and have gardens and things like that and use that fertilization in your garden. So they're really kind of a perfect world, perfect circle that goes around to them. So I would just be a proponent, again, of having the chickens. I think it's a great idea. A lot of communities do it, including Bellevue. They've had great results. Again, if you'd like that information, I'd be happy to share those contacts with you.
Thank you very much. Next proponent.
Hi, my name is Marshall Lang. I reside at 130 West First Street, Papillion. I do have double KFE downtown. As a, and I did email every one of you, the exact same letter one I want to repeat tonight. As a small business owner and a citizen who is passionately advocating for backyard chickens, I do believe that keeping chickens in our backyards can bring numerous benefits to our community. First and foremost, backyard chickens provide a sustainable source of fresh eggs. In addition to providing fresh eggs, backyard chickens can also play a crucial role in maintaining a healthy and balanced ecosystem. Chickens are natural predators of pests and insects, which can help reduce the need for pesticide and other chemicals in our gardens. But the benefits of backyard chickens don't stop there. Keeping chickens can also be valuable educational tool for children and adults alike, like showing them where eggs come from, work, and responsibilities. It also provides an opportunity for community building and social connections as chickens, chickenkeepers often share knowledge, resources, and support with one another. Now, I know that some of you may be concerned about potential noise, mess, and health risks associated with keeping chickens in your backyard. But I'd like to assure you that these concerns can easily be addressed through responsible chickenkeeping practices and sensible regulations. In fact, many cities across the country have successfully implemented backyard chicken ordinances, which have not only allowed residents to keep chickens, but also ensure that they do so in a safe and responsible manner. Double KFE can potentially offer classes if this does get going through. I have spoken with a person, I don't want to name his name yet unless it goes through, and I'm sure some of you might even know him, through the Nebraska Extension Office. He's willing to come to our store and do classes. He teaches. He's a very well-known person in the chicken area.
One minute.
Thank you. So I urge you to consider the benefits of allowing backyard chickens in our city. Not only it provides a sustainable source of fresh eggs and promotes a healthy ecosystem, but can also add sense of community and connection to among our residents. Let's work together and make Papillion more sustainable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Hi there. Edward Weniger, Papillion, Nebraska. I just want to piggyback off of some of the conversations earlier concerning the self-sufficiency and obviously there's the financial impact of buying eggs at the grocery store, but also just the ability to take care of yourself and your family. You know, having a garden is great, but eggs are obviously a good source of protein in case we do wind up having to grow our own food and feed our own families in our backyards. I mean, this could be as simple as something with supply chain, right? We've seen the big packing houses or whatnot, the food production facilities burning, and so it would be nice to have an alternative there. Obviously, from a constitutional standpoint, I think our founding fathers would be pro-chicken. They would, obviously, they had their own and were in favor of self-sufficiency as well. And then, I don't know if you guys saw the petition, it's got 860 signatures on change.org. That could sway a city council ward election. So 860 signatures from grassroots with really no promotion is pretty significant. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next proponent. See none, any opponents? Any neutral? Going once, going twice. Close the public hearing.
We'll keep it open, I'm sorry.
So we will carry it over to the next meeting. Item E three, ordinance 2049, an ordinance to amend Section 175-8 of the Papillion Municipal Code regarding telecommunications occupation acts to coincide with amendments to Nebraska Revised Statute 86704. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing.
We're keeping-
Nope, we're keeping that one open too. That's applying to all of them. And that is all of the public hearings. We've already done F. We've got about 15 minutes. I think we can finish the agenda. Committee reports, golf ad hoc, I believe, met. Mr. Fenslow, are you the chair? Oh, no, that did not meet.
It did after last council meeting.
Oh, after the last council meeting. Any report out? Or no?
We talked about it.
That, that's all right.
So you're going to test my memory, so. So obviously, we had the golf professionals there talking a little bit about the planned, I guess, capital and maintenance items at both of the golf courses. Obviously, we know that Papillion has two gems when it comes to the golf courses, and obviously, we have professional staff that handle those. And so they've got a pretty good plan that they laid in front of us with regard to activities that are going to take place. And so obviously, I think one of the major ones is that Terra Hills continuing, replacing the cart paths and actually even realignment of some of the cart paths, which I think is appreciative of the, of the property owners that are but up next to the golf course. Other than that, other council members can mention anything else?
We approved some very nominal increases in the, in the fees as well, across the board, like a dollar a round or something like that.
Add on to Councilman Sunday's, which keeps us still below average for the metro area for the experience that people get in here in Papillion. It's well worth the money. Thank you. And F and A, Matt, Mr. Ingberg?
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items to discuss. First was some changes to the master, proposed changes to the master fee schedule, which includes what they've talked about with the golf course, a slight increase, but we're still below surrounding metro location. Also, we had a request from the fire department regarding some assistance they provide at private facilities for senior citizens. That needs to be worked through, the process, but we wanted to include that because that would be part of the changes in the master fee schedule. Rest of it was basically cleanup. The other item was about pro soccer outdoor field use, and we recommended, it comes to the full council for approval, a new method of perhaps using lump-sum fee structure for some, for part of the soccer programs, pro, would make it much easier for scheduling, would give pro a slight, very slight decrease in what they pay now. It also relieves the city staff from being so involved in scheduling. Kind of puts the burden back on pro to do that. But all that'll be coming to the councils real soon.
Thank you very much. We're about 10 minutes before the eight o'clock deadline, so-
We're allowed to go before that.
Well, we can, but we'd cut off the administrator's report, but since we've got time, Ms. Powers, can you get the administrator's report, please?
Sure. And I do want to say that my, what was submitted in the pack, it does have a lot of information, so I'll keep this brief, even though we do have time. I do want to extend a huge congratulations to our two employees of the year. Our part-time employee of the year, which is Sarah Tynus. She's a library youth services, and incredible what she does there with the programming, what she does with those kids. And I think Matt called her a local celebrity, so if you go to the library, you know who she is. And then our full-time employee of the year is Sally Jones, which is our assistant finance director, which helps Nancy kind of keep all of our finances in order. So I really appreciate what both of, both of them do for the city. And again, congratulations to both of them. And then just a reminder that March 17th is the St. Patrick's Day Senior Center meal at La Vista. It's their turn. We host Valentine's Day every year, and they host St. Patrick's Day. So if any of you would like to volunteer, reach out to Robin, Tracy, or myself, and we can get you signed up for that. We'd need to be there at 10:30 at La Vista's Community Center, and that's, that's all. Thank you.
And I asked Mr. Sersma, he had three employees that had some pretty big certifications that impact the city. Can you share those?
Yeah, kind of exciting news. Siobhan, who's our plans examiner in the building department, passed her fire certification, which, if you're familiar with the changes we made this past year in our fire department, we now have the fire review and the building permit review happen simultaneously by the same person. And that's really been creating some efficiencies in the timing of permit reviews and eliminates some of the conflict that you have when you have two separate things reviewed by two different people, and then the outcome sometimes isn't consistent with each other. So we're very excited about that. She's been operating under Brad Soke, the department head, who has a certification. It's legal for her to operate under his certification, but now we have two people with that same fire certification. Kevin in the planning department just learned, passed his certified flip plane manager, so that's, so that's great news. Now, there's two people with that certification. in the CRS program, I don't know if everybody's familiar with that, but that actually, because we, of the way that we enforce floodplain regulations and promote that, we get a 15% discount on everyone who has to have flood insurance in the city.
And we're only one of seven cities in the state of Nebraska that are in that program that offer that discount.
Yeah, so that's a big benefit to those who need flood insurance. And then Michelle Andall, just graduated from Leadership Nebraska, which Amber is a graduate, I'm a graduate, it's a fantastic program, and so we're really excited that she was able to go through that program and gain that experience.
And one of the things we were hoping out of Leadership Nebraska is build broader networks across the state, understand what other cities are doing, and with Michelle going through it, she's already brought us two business leads of businesses that might be looking to relocate into the metro area, and we've had conversations with both of those, and we wouldn't have had them but for her being in that program, so appreciate that time. Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks, Ms. Powers and I, and Chief Widdit have had a couple of meetings with the Sarpy Douglas Law Enforcement Agency. The current agreement is up. If you remember, legislature made a change about, I don't know, five years ago or so, where we don't send our police officers to Grand Island for the academy, we have a specialized academy here, and that's been working extremely well. That agreement is up, there's a couple of changes contemplated on it, so we're in some negotiations on what that looks like, so appreciate the chief and Amber's leadership on those discussions, so we don't lose the benefit of what we have. And we're moving forward on the city park design, and because of the legion, being right there in the middle of it, we wanted to make sure that we don't have any conflicts with a number of items that occur there, so we actually had a good meeting with them and the project team today, that went very well, so very pleased with that. And then, just the normal reminder, legislature's in session, if there's any specific bills that have been introduced that you care about, we've got a good method to track those, so make sure we're aware of those, and we can monitor those on your behalf and keep you updated. Anything else, Mr. Fenslow?
I have a question for Mark or Travis on the CRS. How long have we been in the CRS program for floodplain?
I believe it was roughly, Mark, it was under your original tutelage, but it was about 2016, 2015?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's been about 10 years now.
Well, thank you, Mark, for introducing another program, I was going to give Travis two pats on the back for establishing those programs, but I'll just give him, I can only give him credit for one.
And I believe we're a level seven, which, other than Lincoln, that's the best of any cities in the state. Lincoln's a five, and we've had some active discussions, if it makes sense to do that level of work, probably doesn't, so we're in pretty good shape there, I think. Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, we can have a motion to adjourn early. Motion by Councilman Kluk, second by Councilman Glover, please vote.
8808.
We are adjourned, be safe driving home.